Hey, Counselor.
Here.
Counselor Flaherty's here.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn.
Yeah.
Counselor Garrison.
Yeah.
Counselor Janey.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
Counselor Wu.
Present.
And Counselor Zakim.
Here.
And President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, thank you very much. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. And of course, we're happy to welcome back our clerk. I'll leave it at that. Yay! Yes, we can give her a round of applause. Welcome back. At this time, I would like all colleagues, guests, to please rise and staff as Counselor Flaherty comes up to invite our clergy for the day who will lead us in the invocation. I ask that everyone remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. And good afternoon, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce a dear friend of mine and his beautiful wife, Cynthia. Reverend Josh Fulton is the Associate Pastor at Jubilee Christian Church in Mattapan, where he serves faithfully for the last eight years. But I met him, and a lot of folks here met him, and folks watching at home met him when he did his great work with Teen Challenge of Boston, right here in Dorchester. First get started, I think it was in Brockton, if I'm not mistaken. But a couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of joining both Reverend Fulton and Cynthia over at the Christian Jubilee Church, where he and the congregation were very welcoming and with a spectacular message. And so, I want to thank him for taking time out of his schedule. I want to see Cynthia for obviously coming back to City Hall. She spent, I want to say it was like 26 years? Twenty something?
Eight.
Twenty-eight years, even. So, 28 years. A round of applause for city employees like Cynthia. Working in our licensing division. So, it's always great to see you back here at City Hall. But more importantly, good to see Reverend, who's going to give us some words of wisdom today. And I know that we have a full house with lots of issues percolating in our city. And so, today, probably more so than any day, we need prayers. All right? So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I want to express what an honor it is to stand at a gate of prayer, especially in this season. I see that the room is full, so there are voices that are being represented, and there are representatives of those voices that have gathered. And so, if you'll bow your heads and your hearts with me, we want to invite God to lead us. Father, we thank you for this day. Your Word says that this is a day that you have made. And before we ask you for anything, we want to thank you for all things. We thank you for your Word, which is eternal and contains great wisdom. And so, on this day, our prayer is, is that you would occupy this space with your wisdom. As we navigate the various issues that come up and arise in our communities, my prayer is, is that each one of these councilmen and councilwomen would have the voice of their community, that we would seek you in all things. There are many plans of man, but there is a path that you establish. And so, we pray that your wisdom and your peace would occupy this space in the time that we meet together. And at the end of the day, that each person representing their community and those communities would know that the discussions fought for peace, fought for justice, and fought for equality across all conversations. We pray that in these coming weeks, that you would bring people out again to express that voice in the voting season, and that men and women that have been called to serve would be elected to offices that best represent the voice of their community. So, God, we surrender this space and time to your hand. We, as your people, say, "Have your way." In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to invite up Counsel O'Malley, who has a special presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to invite two of our recognized scholar athletes that I'll be introducing and talking a little bit about today, Khalil Mullings and Alina Chumaco, to please join me up on the dais. And as they make their way down, I can talk a little bit about them. Where, many of you will know that I don't often do these presentations before the meeting. I like to limit it because we always have so much work to do. But this is a really important opportunity to recognize two remarkable young people, both of whom live in West Roxbury, live in District 6, and are not only incredible scholars, but incredibly successful athletes as well. I'm honored to introduce and recognize two star athletes from District 6. The first is Alina Chumaco, who's a West Roxbury resident and a junior at the Boston Latin School. Alina started curling at the young age of five, and in 2019, she won the gold medal for the Under-18 U.S. Women's Nationals. Most recently... Most recently, Alina and her team, Team Herbert, won the 2020 U.S. Youth Olympic Team Trials for Curling at the Denver Curling Club in Colorado. They are now representing the United States at the 2020 Winter Youth Olympic Games, which will be held in the beginning of January in Switzerland. So, another incredible thing. I also want to recognize the achievements of Khalil Mullings, a star football player and another constituent of mine from West Roxbury. Two weeks ago, I had one of the coolest opportunities of my time on this body, where I got to join Khalil as he was being, where he received his All-American jersey. He's the only one in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He's the number-one football player in the state for this year, and his athletic and academic ability is obviously extremely impressive and speaks for itself. But as a senior, he's a senior at Milton Academy, he was presented with 30 school offers. And he is committed to... He's committed to the University of Michigan. So, Khalil will be playing in the big house. You can clap for that as well. Joining a list of names that include Larry Foot, Lamar Woodley, Charles Woodson, Ty Law, and there's someone I'm forgetting, Counsel McCarthy.
Quarterback, a good-looking guy?
Good-looking guy, yeah. Another good-looking quarterback, Tom Brady. So, Khalil will either be coming back, playing for the Patriots some days, or he may be Governor of the Commonwealth someday as well, or both. Khalil and Alina are just amazing young athletes that I've gotten to know. Their families are here as well. And I just wanted to take a quick opportunity on behalf of the council to congratulate you both on your success, wish you incredible luck at the Olympics and at Michigan and beyond next year. You guys are obviously a credit to your schools, a credit to your family, and a credit to the City of Boston. So, congratulations to you. Now, if my colleagues could join me for a picture? And if parents want to join us for the picture or take a picture as well, we'd love to have you.
Get right, you flank me on either. Get on the other chair.
Congratulations, you guys.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Thanks.
Here's paparazzi.
I think there's more going on.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's good.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Here's paparazzi.
I think there's more going on.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 It's nice.
Thanks.
Here's paparazzi.
I think there's more going on.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Yeah.
That's good.
Congratulations.
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 Yeah, they're nice kids.
Yeah, they're nice kids.
Congratulations.
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 That's good.
Congratulations.
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 Yeah, they're nice kids.
Yeah, they're nice kids.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you, Counsel O'Malley, for the special presentation. At this time, we will move on to the regular order of business. Moving on to approval of the minutes. There are no corrections to be made. The minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 1518, Message and Order Authorizing and Improving the City of Boston's Conservation Commission to receive property identified by the City of Boston Assessing Department as Zero Rivermore Street in West Roxbury.
Oops, thank you so much. In West Roxbury neighborhood of Boston, with a parcel identified number 20-0922-8020, the property. The property is currently under the care and custody of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, known as BPDA, and is located on the banks of the Cow Island Pond area of the Charles River in West Roxbury.
Docket 1518 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 1519, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand an Amount of $4,342,674 in the form of a grant to the FY19 Lead Paint Hazard Reduction Grant Program, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund abatement, inspection, risk assessment, temporary location, and interim control of lead-based paint hazards in eligible privately-owned, single-family, and multifamily housing units that are occupied by low-income families.
Docket 1519 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 1520, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand a Parkland Acquisition and Renovation of Communities, known as PARC, Grant, awarded by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Division of Conservation Services, in the amount not to exceed $400,000, to be administered by the Boston Parks and Recreation Department. The grant will fund Phase III of renovations of the Harabee Park in Dorchester.
Docket 1520 will be assigned to the Committee on Environment, Sustainability, and Parks.
Docket number 1521, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand an Amount of $300,000 in the form of a grant for the Go Boston 2030, awarded by the BAHA Foundation, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund transparent communication, tracking, and evaluation of the progress of implementing the projects identified in Go Boston 2030, the city's long-term mobility plan.
Docket 1521 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 1522, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand an Amount of $99,811.20 in the form of a grant for the FY19 BJA Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a cross-system collaboration to improve responses and outcomes for individuals with mental health, with mental illness, or co-occurring mental illness and substance abuse who come into contact with the justice system.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I rise to respectfully request a suspension and passage of docket number 1522, as the clerk stated this morning. Will go directly to the Police Department in helping with the mental health issues and substance abuse issues we have on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, at this time, is the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1522. All those in favor and passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1522 has been passed.
Docket number 1523, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand an Amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant from the Harvard-Austin Public Realm Flexible Fund, awarded by the Boston Redevelopment Authority, to be administered by Arts and Culture Department. The grant will fund a consultant to identify both creative placemaking and placekeeping opportunities in keeping with the unique and varied present-day character of the dynamic Austin-Brighton neighborhood.
Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I rise to ask suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1523. It's pretty self-explanatory, as we've heard from our wonderful clerk, who is back with us. This is a $50,000 grant that will go to fund a consultant position to identify creative placemaking in the Austin-Brighton neighborhood. So, again, I ask for suspension of the rules and passage of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel Janey, who's Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1523. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1523 has been passed.
Docket number 1524, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand the Amount of $40,000 in the form of a grant for the FY2020 Jail Arrest Diversion Grant, awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund crisis intervention training.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam President. I rise to suspend and pass 1524, docket number 1524, as the clerk stated. It's a $40,000 grant that will go directly to fund crisis intervention training. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McCarthy, who's Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1524. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1524 has been passed.
Docket number 1525, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expand an Amount of $4,520 in the form of a grant for the FY17 Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, awarded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Development. The grant will fund planning and implementing programs to move Boston from a city where multiple programs serve youth and young adults at risk and experiencing homelessness to a city with a coordinated resource and data-informed system with common vision and goals aimed at preventing and ending youth homelessness. The original award was $4,920,000, was increased by $4,520 when the contract was finalized by HUD.
Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for suspension and passage, as it's just a very small addition to a grant that we've already approved by this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Asabi George, who's the Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1525. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 1525 has been passed. Moving on to reports of committees.
Docket number 0396, a Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, to which is referred on February 27, 2019. Docket number 0396, An Order on Black Maternal Health, Racial, and Gender Equality in Healthcare System in the City of Boston, submits a report recommending the order ought to be placed on file.
Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to thank my dear colleague and friend and cosponsor, the Counsel from District 7, for her partnership on this. Thank you. I think virtually every counselor or his or her staff participated in the hearing last Friday. It was really informative. It really allowed us an opportunity to delve deeply into an issue that unfortunately is all too pervasive in the United States. We're talking, of course, about black maternal health, as well as racial and gender equity in the healthcare system in the City of Boston. The epidemic of maternal morbidity for black mothers has become an issue that is throughout the country. The United States has the highest rate of deaths from any cause related to or aggravated by pregnancy compared to any other developed country. For black women, the maternal morbidity rate is 40 deaths per 100,000 births compared to 12.4 per 100,000 births for white women. And while Massachusetts leads nationally in maternal health, disparities obviously exist and persist in our city. So, we had the opportunity to convene some great stakeholders, Monica Valdez-Lupi, Executive Director of Boston Public Health Commission, Dr. Robin Reed, who's an Assistant Professor at Tufts University School of Medicine, as well as folks from the Collaborative, the Bay State Birth Coalition. We had a pretty extensive public testimony as well. We're not going to solve this issue as the Boston City Council, but what we can do is bring people together, highlight these disparities, and come up with strategies to address them. So, at the conclusion of the hearing, there's no action taken, but one of the reasons why I wanted to speak on it is the District 7 Counselor and I have agreed to provide, we are both re-elected on Tuesday, reintroduce this in the new year, in January of 2020, and begin a series of working sessions, particularly at neighborhood health centers and community resources. I think that's a great opportunity to get out there in the community, talk to folks. You know, we can actually come up with some solutions that make sense. A number of women talked about how if there were, you know, a critical number, even a handful of pregnant women who are all around the same time in their pregnancy, they would go to appointments together. They'd offer a support system, things like that, that we can be helping to convene and address. And it's really an important issue, and one that I'm delighted to work with my partner and friend on, and look forward to seeing this body continue to play a role and then a larger leadership role come the new year. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just rise to commend the chairmanship of my good friend and colleague from District 6, and for his leadership and on this issue, as well as his partnership. This is a very important issue. It impacts so many people, not only in the City of Boston, but our country. I am delighted and look forward to continuing the conversation. The only thing that I would add, I think absolutely right, that we want to start at the community health centers to continue this conversation. One thing that came up, too, was the importance of doulas, and how we need to do more of encouraging people to become doulas, and making sure that people had, women in particular, had access to them. So, I look forward to this work, and again, I thank you for your partnership and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel O'Malley. At this time, Counsel O'Malley, Chair of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, recommends that this docket be placed on file. So, docket 0396 will be placed on file. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0193, Order for Hearing to Discuss Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault in the City of Boston.
Counselor McCarthy, do you want to say anything as Chair, or do you want me to?
No, you can roll it. No, that's all.
So, I'll start with just by thanking Counsel McCarthy, who's the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, for allowing me to actually chair this hearing as the Vice Chair of this committee. And I'll have Counsel Flynn, who was the cosponsor, speak to the docket. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Counsel McCarthy also. Madam President, we had a hearing on domestic violence and sexual assault on Monday at Northeastern University Law School, and we were able to hear from a variety of people. We had two panels at the hearing. The first panel consisted of three survivors of domestic violence, and the second panel included service providers. Panelists included Deputy Superintendent Sharon Dutton and Captain Terry Thomas from the Boston Police Family Justice Unit, the Suffolk County District Attorney Rachel Rollins, Representative from the Public Health Commission, Representative from the Children's Advocacy Center of Suffolk County, Representative from Brookview House from Casamarna, from the Fenway Health. And we had excellent support throughout this process from Margot Landier from the Domestic Violence Institute at Northeastern University School of Law. And not only did Margot host us at the Northeastern University School of Law, myself and Council President met for the last four or five months with survivors and with providers as well. And that was due to the leadership of Margot for helping us learn more about this important subject. In the first panel, we heard from brave survivors talking about the challenges of getting services, how difficult it is even to ask for help. These survivors bravely talked about that there is still a lack of resources to address their needs, and how difficult it is to navigate the system. They also talked about how domestic violence is not just physical, but it also can be manipulation and psychological abuse as well. These were powerful stories told by survivors. It was not easy for them to recount what happened, so we applaud our survivors. From service providers, we were able to hear about their challenges in trying to get adequate resources to serve their clients' needs. We heard from the Asian-American Task Force Against Domestic Violence, and the Co-Executive Director spoke about the need for language access, and having cultural competency and sensitivity to serve a diverse constituency, including many immigrants. We also heard about the barriers for victims to report domestic violence and sexual assault, including systematic racism and poverty. One thing that came up again and again is the connection between domestic violence and homelessness, how the victims would often go homeless if they did, if they reported the abuse, and that there is a lack of shelter space in the system. Housing and having affordable housing is very important in this conversation. This is an important issue in our city. I learned a lot, and I know the people in the audience learned a lot as well. I want to thank especially the Council President, Council President Campbell and her staff for partnering with me, but more importantly, for working closely with survivors and providers who testified at the hearing. I want to say thank you to the central staff that played a critical role for us as well, Shane, Candace, and Kerry, for their tremendous leadership. We envision that this is a first in a series of conversations regarding this topic. And I also wanted to highlight the work of my mother when she was the First Lady, the work she did on domestic violence issues as well. Madam President, I look forward to working closely with you and our colleagues and with the Walsh administration on this critical issue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn, and thank you for the partnership. That was probably one of the most powerful hearings I've ever chaired as a counselor, and it just reminded us that we have tremendous work to do in this space. And there's a lot, a lot of work to do, but the best thing about it were the survivors that showed up to courageously share their stories and to remind us the importance of having them at the table when we're promulgating regulations, policy, or coming up with ideas, even defining what we think justice looks like. Those women defined for us what justice looks like, which included accountability, transparency, and acknowledgement. So, it was extremely powerful. It was also extremely powerful to host it and to do all this work in partnership with you in your office. So, thank you, and thank you to central staff. Oh, I also want to acknowledge that Counsel Asabi George sent a wonderful letter, which we write into the record. Thank you as well for sending that letter. Docket 0193 will remain in the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 0250, An Ordinance Protecting Local Wetlands and Promoting Climate Change Adaptation in the City of Boston.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a working session on this matter yesterday. The proposed ordinance, sponsored by our colleagues, City Counsel Michelle Wu and City Counsel Mad O'Malley, seeks to protect wetlands, water resources, as well as flood-prone areas and adjoining areas within the city. During the session, we had a robust discussion around the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission as it pertains to flood protection and river
the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission as it pertains to flood protection in riverfront areas. We also addressed butter notification expansions into the riverfront areas, as well as special transition areas. There's also discussion about the timing of the implementation of the ordinance, potential carve-outs for buffer zones and no-disturb areas, as well as the impacts that it will have with respect to lending institutions and flood insurance policy. So, based on the feedback, I'm just asking that remaining committee, I know there was a discussion, there's a shared goal by the lead sponsors, this body and the Administration, to get this passed shortly. I would love to, through the chair, turn it over to either or both of the lead sponsors for their final comments. And just note that from the Administration, and we also had a lot of stakeholders and advocates yesterday, but Chris Cook, Chief of the Environment, Carl Spektor, the Environment Commissioner, Amelia Crotto, the Executive Secretary of the Boston Conservation Commission, Chris Bush, the Senior Waterfront Planner for the VPDA, and Nick Marino, Conservation Assistant from the Environment Department, all were present yesterday, providing very valuable input and testimony, as were several members of the public. So, through that, I'd like to keep it in committee, but I think we're pretty close to having this new wetlands protection order become legislation in Boston. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Wu, you have the floor. Give a preference.
Thank you so much. It's been fun working on this with my seatmate and partner on a lot of these climate issues, and thank you so much to the Chair for keeping this going throughout this year. We're right there. We're so close. And so, Counselor O'Malley and I actually just sent the list of kind of final points to the Coalition to get their feedback, but mostly around the framing of certain issues. I think we're excited to get this done and make sure that Boston will start the process. One thing of note, one of the points of debate or language changes that we're considering is when it would take effect. We know that once this passes, there will be a process after that for the Conservation Commission to actually issue regulations on what specifics they want, and how they would regulate the certain types of natural resource areas. They estimated at the working session that that would be about a year-and-a-half-long process, likely phased in with certain pieces of it adopted sooner than others. So, I think we just need a little more clarity in terms of what could we put in to be implemented and passed immediately, and then what we'll have to wait for that year-and-a-half process, because there's time ticking away on the climate stuff. So, we want to make sure that we're striking that right balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Okay. Sorry about that. Docket 0250 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1526, Counselor Asabi George offered the following, an ordinance to create the Special Commission on Ending Family Homelessness.
Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to present an ordinance to create a Special Commission on Ending Family Homelessness in the city of Boston. As we all know too well, our city is experiencing a crisis of housing and displacement due to the shortage of affordable units. Throughout this crisis, I believe there's an urgent need to prioritize the growing number of families with children experiencing homelessness, both in our city and in our Commonwealth. Our families represent the most vulnerable population impacted by the housing crisis because they are being priced out due to the lack of affordable, family-sized units, and the lack of investments in public housing options. Last year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development released their annual homeless assessment report for 2018, and found that Massachusetts experienced the largest increase of families with children experiencing homelessness in the last 10 years. From 2007 to 2018, the number of families experiencing homelessness increased by 94%. We have anywhere between 14,000 and 20,000 members of families experiencing homelessness in Massachusetts. With that report, HUD listed the city of Boston as the third largest number, with the third-largest number of people in families with children experiencing homelessness nationwide. As we all know, there are 5,000 students in the Boston Public Schools experiencing homelessness, and about another 1,800 kids that are not yet school-aged experiencing homelessness in our city. Children impacted by homelessness face a proven greater risk of dropping out of high school permanently and leading to a continued life of poverty and another generation of homelessness. The trauma of housing instability combined with food insecurity and low attendance further exacerbate the opportunity and achievement gaps in our Boston Public Schools. Last night, we had our last forum, so take back on track here. We cannot expect our children to succeed in school or in life without a strong foundation of support, and that requires a safe and stable place to live. Until this crisis of family homelessness is met with a substantial, statewide, and fully-financed effort, we as a city cannot wait for the state to act when presented with the alarming reality of family homelessness. These are our kids, these are our families, and they represent the most vulnerable population impacted by the housing crisis. Over the last two years, I have hosted monthly roundtable sessions with about 60 family shelter providers serving the greater Boston area to better understand this crisis and to create solutions to end family homelessness. We have worked with these providers and those experiencing homelessness, looking for solutions. This ordinance is a culmination of our partnership, and I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to these providers and their residents for their tireless commitment to serving our families, and I'd like to thank them for their collaboration. To name just a few, Horizons for Homeless Children, Family Aid, Coalition for Supportive Housing, the Elizabeth Stone House, Heading Home, St. Mary's Center for Women, Winter Walk, Hildebrand, Brookview House, and many others. I look forward to moving forward with this ordinance, because I believe that family homelessness is a solvable crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter or add their name? Madam Clerk, if you could add. Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor — I was about to point to you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Garrison, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Wu, Counselor Zachem, as well as the Chair, and Counselor Baker. Sorry about that, Counselor Baker. At this time, Docket 1526 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Okay. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Seeing and he — oh, by the way, point of clarification, you don't have it because it's a personnel order. So, seeing and hearing no objection, the matter is so added. Madam Clerk, if you could read it into the record.
Thank you, Madam President. October 30, 2019, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Janey.
Counselor Janey seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the late-file matter. All those in favor of passage, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The late-file matter has been passed. Anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets? Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor. Counselor Janey, you have the floor. Okay. To avoid confusion, Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
No green sheets. Anyone else has a matter to pull from the green sheets? I'll yield if not. Just want to make an announcement at the appropriate time.
You can — it doesn't have to do with the green sheets?
Well, it's a matter in the green sheet.
Yep, go ahead.
Just for planning purposes.
Go right ahead, Counselor Flaherty.
So, I plan to have a committee report on Docket 0315. That's the Equitable Regulation of the Cannabis Industry within the next session or two. So, be on the lookout for it. It's really more of a public notice, making sure that the public is aware that we're prepared to move on this in short order. And if anyone has any questions or comments based on the committee report, try to get them to us as soon as possible, so we can get the final product on the floor and be prepared for a vote the next session or the following session. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As the lead sponsor of this ordinance, I would like to go on record, one, to thank all of my colleagues for your thoughtful input during this process, certainly the Mayor's Office. I believe that we are very close to reaching agreement on items that are being discussed. What we all understand is that there are people in our city who are being hurt by inaction, so it is important that this body take action and put something forward. People are spending tens of thousands of dollars to pay rent for locations in the hope of perhaps opening a cannabis business. They deserve action from this body. They deserve all of us to act with a lens toward equity, to help our local residents, especially those who have been harmed by the war on drugs, enter into this business, this industry, as our state law has already mandated, that we create an inclusive economy. So, I want to thank you guys for your participation, for your suggestions, for your ideas. I think it is imperative that we move forward immediately, and I would like to call for a vote next week. And so, I will work closely with the Chair and any of you who want to work on this, to ensure that we have a good, strong committee report, and that we will be ready for a vote.
Can you remind me which docket this is?
This is Docket 0315. It is the ordinance for an equitable regulation of the cannabis industry in the city of Boston. There is, again, a lot of agreement. I know that all of you have heard from entrepreneurs who are being held hostage by the inaction of our city. So, we need to move forward so that we can have a system in place where there is true equity, and those who have been harmed by the war on drugs and by mass incarceration are actually able to benefit from this. And so, I look forward to continuing conversation that gets us to that goal. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. And just a point of clarification, Docket 0315, we're putting notice out there because it is such a rich and robust ordinance to the public that either in the next meeting, or, and I hear from the sponsor, she'd like it to be the next meeting, or the following after that, that we will likely take —
The next meeting after that.
Okay. That we would like to take action. And so, this provides ample notice that we will be hopefully at the next meeting pulling this from the docket for action, gives notice to the public, and of course, gives notice to every colleague in here. So, thank you, Counselor Janey, for those comments. I appreciate it. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to be, to go on record, saying I feel that we should have done something today. I think we should be having that robust discussion today. And while I understand we may have wanted more time, what I did not hear from my colleagues is a firm commitment that there will be a vote next week. I've not heard that it'll be pulled. It hasn't been pulled, or tabled, or moved to next week. Instead, I hear in the next session or so, which is what I've been hearing the entire time. So, I am not hearing a full commitment that this is going to happen. I'm disappointed. I wish we did have that.
So, Counselor Edwards, I'm assuming you want to go on the record, hoping that Docket 0315 will be pulled from the green sheets next week for a vote?
I don't, I didn't, I'm sorry. But, Counsel President, I'm going on record wishing that it was pulled today. I wish that they pulled, and I think we would have the votes to pull it today. That's what I'm going on record as.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards.
Thank you so much.
Just to reinforce the board, so there's no committee report? A committee report has not been finalized, and there was also no public notice, and there were amendments. And so, for full disclosure and transparency, that's why it's not taking place today. But there is a commitment from the Chair to turn around a committee report, and we will vote on it either next Wednesday or the following meeting after that. I think it's within two weeks. And that will be worked out with the lead sponsor and the Administration. So, within next week or two weeks after that, there will be a vote. There'll be a full committee report. There'll be public disclosure pursuant to our open-meeting laws, and we'll have a vote. Thank you.
Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to go on record affirming what my good friend and colleague from District 1 has stated. There is a deep sense of urgency that I feel. I am also disappointed that we have not moved forward more quickly in this process. As I've already stated, people are spending tens of thousands of dollars and bleeding their whole life savings dry, in the hope that maybe they can open up a cannabis shop in the city of Boston. And that is unfair to them. It is unfair to all of the residents who have questions about what this means for their community. So, I share the sense of urgency. My commitment is to bring this to a vote next week. We will not have a meeting the following week because of Veterans Day. Then, we're running up against Thanksgiving. My goal and plan is to have a vote next week. I am hopeful that I can work with the committee Chair to get this committee report done and bring this to this body next week.
Understood.
Thank you.
And if I can be supportive in getting this to a vote for next week, that would be ideal. Look forward to working with the committee Chair, central staff as well, and the assigned member to that committee, to go through appropriate process of having a committee report, preferably by next week's meeting. I will work in support with the Chair, and of course, with the host of the ordinance. Thank you. Anyone else looking to remove a matter from the green sheets, or speak on anything related to the green sheets? Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will be moving on to the consent agenda. There are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. Thank you. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Any announcements? Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement. Five years ago today, the city of Boston, and I think the Commonwealth and the country, lost a giant. We remember our late Mayor, Thomas M. Menino, who died five years ago on this very date. We all knew him. Some of us worked with him on this body, others worked for him in his administration. At least two of us ran against him at one point or another. He was synonymous with our city, just a larger-than-life presence, the first mayor that so many people remember. And I just, I know, I reached out to Mrs. Menino this morning, and I know that she's doing terrifically, but just as we close in memory of, on behalf of the council, I hope we can add Tom Menino as well. Just a tremendous guy that I know we all think about quite often. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Anyone else have any announcements? At this time, I would like all colleagues, guests, and staff to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Janey, Gina Kendall, Stephen Smith, former Congressman John Conyers. For Counselor Flynn, Paul Scudriss. For Counselors Asabi George, Baker, Flaherty, Ann Flynn, Robert Walsh. For Counselor O'Malley, David Flynn. For the Chair and Counselor O'Malley, Mike Giordano. And lastly, Thomas Menino in memoriam. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again in this chamber on Wednesday, November 6, at 12:00 noon at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.